If everyone would take their seats, we're going to get started with our meeting. Please take your seats.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. It is a little bit after 6 o'clock PM on Tuesday, March, excuse me, March 11th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council chambers as well as our listening audience at WCBU. Welcome also to our audience watching on cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Regenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. A notice was received by Councilmember Allen of the city council in accordance with rules established in ordinance number 16,00142. Councilmember Allen would be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to Councilmember Allen's electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the city council physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by Councilmember Allen to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the city council and the presiding officer shall declare Councilmember Allen present. Hearing no objection, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me, everyone, and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is that the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk.
We are at proclamations.
We have several proclamations tonight, four of them, and several councilmembers are going to join me in presenting the proclamations. The first proclamation will be acknowledgement of Women's History Month, and it will be presented by Councilwoman Dr. Bernice Gordon Young.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas March is a significant, whereas March is a significant month to honor and acknowledge the accomplishments of women, in 1987, Congress declared the month of March as Women's History Month, and March 8th is recognized as International Women's Day, a global day that celebrates the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women, and whereas 51% of our community members are women, and these women have played and continue to play critical, economic, cultural, philanthropic, and social roles in the creation and ongoing development of our city. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, and the civil rights movement. And whereas Peoria has had its share of native daughters who have gone into the world to make their marks in academia, entertainment, politics, sports, and business, including entrepreneur Annie Minerva Turnbull Malone, feminist author Betty Friedan, diplomat Nancy Brinker, and her sister Susan Coleman, Peoria red wing catcher and inductee of the Illinois Amateur Softball Hall of Fame Irene Kerwin, and philanthropist, philanthropist, excuse me, Lydia Moss Bradley, to name just a few. And whereas Women's History Month honors women of every race, status, and ethnicity who have worked to establish an equal role for women, ensuring the appreciation and value of equitable labor for future generations. Now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge March as Women's History Month. In Peoria, Illinois, dated this 11th day of March 2025 AD.
Happy Women's History Month. Our next proclamation recognizes the 150th anniversary of the Peoria Fire Department, and representing today will be our chief, Fire Chief Sean Solberger, our Assistant Fire Chief Tony Cummings, our Division Chief of Operations Laura Baxter, our Division Chief of Training Roland Tinley, and our Division Chief of Prevention Nate Rice. And the proclamation will be read by Councilmember Chuck Grab.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're all going to be in safe hands if any of us faints here tonight, because we like to talk not only about our firefighters, but our fire rescue personnel. Mayor, whereas the Peoria Fire Department was established as a professional paid department by the Peoria City Council on March 9, 1875, and whereas the Peoria Fire Department now covers 50.2 square miles, maintains 12 fire stations, and includes more than 185 commissioned personnel, and whereas the Peoria Fire Department executes its vision of perseverance, excellence, opportunity, respect, and accountability on a daily basis, and whereas the Peoria Fire Department is committed to serving our community through fire suppression, rescue, emergency medical service, hazardous material mitigation, fire prevention education, fire and arson investigation, and fire code inspections. And whereas the Peoria Fire Department will continue to serve the community of Peoria with professionalism and compassion, now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, and on behalf of the city council, celebrate the 150th year anniversary of the Peoria Fire Department dated this 11th day of March 2025 AD in Peoria, Illinois.
All right.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, Distinguished Council, I want to say thank you. As mentioned by Councilman Grab, a mere 150 years ago, in council chambers, the city of Peoria elected to start their first paid fire engine. So tonight, I thought that it was only respectful for us to bring the central house crews with us with Truck One, Engine One, Battalion One. When we think of the services that the Peoria Fire Department provides, and when it started with one fire engine way back when, with Engine One, and then now we have grown to 12 fire stations with the type of services that we provide, we're only as good as the staff that we have. Peoria Firefighters Local 50 President Kyle Field is here. We have very well-educated, trained, professional firefighters that provide these level of services on a daily basis. So I wanted to say thank you from fire management, from our fire suppression personnel, and from our administrative staff as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next proclamation recognizes MS Awareness Week, and it will be presented by Councilman Mike Vespa. We also have representing the Chair of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Central Illinois Community Council, Mr. Brian Gorsuch. Thank you for being here, Mr. Gorsuch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas multiple sclerosis is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting nearly 1 million people in the United States alone, the disease strikes people in the prime of life between ages 20 through 50. The cause of the often debilitating symptoms is unknown, and no cure currently exists. And whereas since 1946, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been a driving force of MS research, relentlessly pursuing prevention, treatments, and a cure while investing more than $1 billion in groundbreaking research. And whereas the mission of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society is to cure MS while empowering people affected by MS to live their best lives, one that all Americans in Illinois should support, and whereas the city of Peoria recognizes the importance of finding the cause and cure of MS, and it expresses its appreciation for the dedication that the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Central Illinois Community Council has shown toward creating a world free of MS. Now therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize March 9th through March 15th as MS Awareness Week in Peoria, Illinois, dated this 11th day of March 2025 AD.
All right. Thank you.
It gives me great pride to be up here today to say thank you, not only for the MS Awareness Week proclamation, but being Women's History Month and the National MS Society being started by Sylvia Lowry, it gives me even more pride to be here tonight. So thank you all. Madam Mayor, city council members, I'm going to take a moment just to say thank you to the city of Peoria for recognizing MS Awareness Week with this proclamation. Your support means so much to those of us affected by multiple sclerosis, as well as the families, caregivers, advocates, all working toward a world free of MS. So thank you again for your leadership commitment to this cause. Your recognition is a powerful step toward creating a brighter future for those living with MS, and please join us on our day of celebration on May 17th for Walk MS Peoria, and can't wait to see you all down here. So thank you, thank you all very much.
And our final proclamation tonight recognizes Peoria First LEGO League Challenge. We have Adira Ramesh, she's the team member of the Lightning Bots, and we have Naima Niani, Naiani Metta Rametla, team member of Energy Wizards. Thank you for being here, young ladies. Whereas First for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology is an international not-for-profit youth organization that was founded in 1989. And whereas the First LEGO League FLL Challenge guides 4th through 8th grade students in learning and exploring STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math through robot design, coding, programming, research, problem solving, and friendly competition. And whereas in April, two Peoria teams, the Lightning Bots and Energy Wizards, will be the only teams representing Illinois at the 2025 First World Championship in Houston, Texas. This experience will showcase their accomplishments while they represent Peoria and Illinois on a global stage with only 160 participating teams. And whereas the two FLL robotics teams have earned a total of 13 combined awards, including six champion awards, which recognize outstanding innovation, exceptional robot design, and strong demonstration of core values. And whereas the Lightning Bots and Energy Wizards have assisted in the creation of six additional teams in the state of Illinois, increasing the overall participation and awareness of both STEM and the First FLL program. Now therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, recognize the Lightning Bots and Energy Wizards for their outstanding achievement and dedication to the Peoria First LEGO League Challenge in Peoria, Illinois, dated this 11th day of March 2025. So speaking on behalf of the teams again is Adira and Niani.
Good evening, everyone. I am Adira Ramesh, and I am part of the First LEGO League team, the Lightning Bots. Both of our teams are very passionate about STEM and believe that everyone should have the opportunity to explore the FLL program. We have dedicated countless hours to inspire many kids about science, math, and technology. Our two teams have helped create six additional teams in the state, increasing the overall number of teams. We have engaged around 60 kids who are excited to be part of a team and learn about the beauty of robotics and STEM. We have also focused on ensuring that kids who are neurodivergent feel welcomed and supported in First. This demonstrates how robotics can unite people and create an inclusive environment for all. And on behalf of our team, I would like to thank our coaches for their exceptional mentorship throughout this season. Thank you very much for this opportunity to share our successes with you guys.
Superstars, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Ali and councilmembers. My name is Naimey Metta Rametla, and I am part of the FLL team, Energy Wizards. Based on our FLL experience, we wanted to give back to the community, so we organized a LEGO workshop and hosted a community competition at the Northwoods Mall to raise funds. With those funds, we provided LEGO kits for neurodivergent students at Dunlap Middle School. We also held sessions to inspire more kids to explore STEM. Our two teams have done really well, winning a total of 13 awards. Reaching the world championship is a big achievement. Only 0.5% of 480 teams make it this far. As one of the top two teams in Illinois, we will now compete with 160 other teams globally. We are excited, since we are two local teams from Peoria County, preparing to compete in the world championship and eagerly looking forward to the event. Thank you to everyone who has supported us and helped us inspire more students in our community to get involved in STEM. And I would like to thank you guys for giving us this opportunity to talk.
We're so proud of you. Thank you. You're our future. This is our future, ladies and gentlemen. We should feel good about that, yes. Madam Clerk.
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the joint city council and town board meeting held on February 11th, 2025, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Graham. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at the town portion of the agenda. 25-033 is a request from the town officials to approve the February 2025 actual expenditures and to approve the March 2025 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Trustee Graham.
Move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
25-34 is a communication from the town officials with a request to approve the agenda for the annual town meeting to be held on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025.
Trustee Graham.
Move to approve the agenda for the annual town meeting to be held on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. I would encourage everybody to look it over carefully. There is a public question on the agenda for our consideration on the 8th of April.
Seconded by trustee Seer. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Trustee Allen.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at the consent agenda. 25-35 is a communication with request to approve the low bid from Illinois Civil Contractors, Inc., and award a contract for the Moffett Cemetery Infrastructure Improvements Project in the amount of $99,715.77, with an additional authorization of $9,984.23 for contingencies, for a total amount of $109,700. 25-36 is a communication with request to approve the master service agreement with Open Gov, Inc., for the city of Peoria Enterprise Asset Management System in the amount of $873,871.13, with an additional authorization of $48,831.87 for contingencies, for a total agreement in an amount not to exceed $922,703. 25-37 is a communication with request to approve the amended intergovernmental agreement between the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives and the city of Peoria. 25-38 is a communication with request to approve a resolution releasing the minutes of closed session listed on Schedule A and for confidentiality to remain as to the minutes of Schedule B. 25-39 is a communication with recommendation to approve a resolution regarding compensation of city employees. 25-40 is a communication with request concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R3 single-family residential district for the transfer of property of a legal nonconforming duplex for the property located at 2510 West Newman Parkway. 25-41 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance partially abating the tax heretofore levied to pay special service area property taxes on the Holiday Inn Property Tax Special Service Area in the amount of $160,000. 25-42 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance partially abating the tax heretofore levied to pay special service area property taxes on the Peoria Sports Center Property Tax Special Service Area in the amount of $150,000. 25-43 is a communication with request to approve the Labor Day picnic at Riverfront Festival Park on September 1, 2025, sponsored by Peoria Area Community Events, Inc., subject to their filing of the necessary permits and approval as required by city code. 25-44 is a communication with request to approve the site application for a Class B restaurant 50% food liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for Tequila Arapuato LLC doing business as Coco's Tacos at 319 Main, contingent upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. 25-45 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Downtown Advisory Commission with request concur of John Dre. 25-46 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Metropolitan Airport Authority of Peoria with request concur of Emily Shields. 25-47 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Housing Authority Board with request concur of Ceron Graham. 25-48 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Peoria Public Library Board of Trustees with a request to concur of Cecilia Buckner. And 25-49 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Transportation Commission with a request concur of Keith Rozinski. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Permission to remove item number 25-037, 41, and 42, please.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to have item number 25-035 removed.
Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the ballots.
Seconded by Councilmember Graham. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
25-35 is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to approve the low bid from Illinois Civil Contractors, Inc., and award a contract for the Moffett Cemetery Infrastructure Improvements Project in the amount of $99,715.77, with an additional authorization of $9,984.23 for contingencies, for a total amount of $109,700.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to acknowledge this wonderful project that Mr. Hofer and his team and everybody worked so hard on, and I am happy to see that this funding will bring this much-needed parking area to this wonderful park, and I just encourage the public and everyone, once it's complete, to please go down and visit the Freedom and Remembrance Memorial Park, which commemorates all of those buried there who fought for freedoms and rights in this country. So with that, Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve item number 25-035.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
25-37 is a communication from the city manager and corporation council with request to approve the amended intergovernmental agreement between the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives and the city of Peoria.
Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question for city manager. I see in the details here that they were supposed to move in on February 3rd. Since we're now in March, have they been moved in, and is that a problem for what we're approving tonight?
No, it shouldn't be a problem with what we're approving tonight, and they have moved in, it's my understanding, so they're all in place.
Move to approve, Madam Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any other questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash forty-one is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with request to adopt an ordinance partially abating the tax heretofore levied to pay special service area property taxes on the Holiday Inn Property Tax Special Service Area in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, same question for both these items coming up here. There's obviously, just for the sake of transparency, the numbers are different. Like, the first one is supposed to be a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. It's now going to be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Yeah, the, uh, item forty-two actually has a bigger num, uh, bigger discrepancy. We're looking at six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars versus a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I apologize for not calling you today, by the way, to ask these questions. But hopefully you can, uh, I talked to Director Craddy yesterday, so I know the answer. But like I said, for transparency's sake, I want to be, make sure everybody understands.
So, so part of this pertains to the fact that we have collections of the special service area taxes that are collected in, in each one of the, the Holiday Inn Special Service Area, as well as the Louisville Slugger Special Service Area. Um, when those projects were started, we issued bonds for public improvements on both of those projects. And then these special service area taxes, coupled with property taxes, pays the debt service back on that. So there's a kind of a true-up period where we look at how much of the sales taxes come in, and then that calculates how much is going to be required to be levied in terms of property taxes. The sales tax comes first, then the property tax comes second. And so this is just the calculation. So that's why the numbers may have changed from where they were originally were, uh, as, as we see the, the sales tax collections coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any other questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash forty-two is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with request to adopt an ordinance partially abating the tax heretofore levied to pay special service area property taxes on the Peoria Sports Center Property Tax Special Service Area in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Same question, Mr. Manager. Uh, before your answer, though, I want to make sure everybody understands, these bonds are 20-year bond. We're about roughly in the tenth year of a 20-year, uh, SSA commitment. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So why did, on this one, this item, the discrepancy is so much larger? We go from six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty. Uh, please explain. Thank you very much.
Well, I think because there's been more sales tax that's been generated on this site. So that's a good thing in, in terms of that. And so, because this is an additional one percent tax that's in the, the, the sales tax in that special service area around Louisville Slugger.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any other questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at first readings. Twenty-five dash fifty is a communication from the city manager and corporation council with request to receive and file the first reading of the amendment to the urban decay abatement ordinance.
Uh, which one are you going to take this? Council Hayes?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes.
Good evening. So back in 2021, in March 2021, we adopted this urban decay abatement ordinance originally. And it, it provided, uh, benefits for individuals that would build a single-family owner-occupied residential home, either in the area running north of downtown through Averyville, or on the south side, um, uh, on the other side of Western. Those two areas were identified. Um, and we had support of our local taxing partners for that process. Um, the legislature last year modified this statute to allow for individuals to rehabilitate an existing structure and benefit by, uh, the tax abatements. So the program now has been through a hearing process with our local taxing pro, partners. And what's in front of you, uh, for consideration at our next meeting would be an ordinance adopting, uh, this program for those same areas, but expanding it to include the legislatively approved rehabilitative costs. So if an individual re, spent money rehabilitating a residence, the increased, uh, taxes based on that improvement would be rebated to that individual for 10 years. So the program now includes single-family residences that are built new. And in that, uh, regard, the, the taxes from the entire structure would be rebated to the property owner for 10 years. Or they can rehabilitate an existing structure, and the increase in the assessed value and therefore taxes on the structure would be rebated for 10 years. In addition to that, the program provides that the land will remain taxed at the same level, won't be subject to this rebate. But the increases in the land value over time for those areas, the taxes from those increases will be pooled and split amongst the participants based on their state of Illinois income tax liability. I know that's a little complex, but the whole purpose of this program is to encourage single-family owner-occupied homes to be either built or rehabilitated in these neighborhoods. And as we know from our land bank activities and demolitions, we've created a lot of open lots and a lot of opportunity in, in those areas for individuals who might want to invest. Um, the program will run for a period of 20 years from your adoption, if you approve it. So that individuals next year, or the year after, or eight or 10 years from now, can still enjoy the entire 10-year rebate period. And the council can take up at a future time whether to extend or expand this program. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kelly, you championed for this. Would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would. Certainly, our corporation council has laid out the, the facts. And I, and he and I have worked on this quite a bit. I'm very appreciative of his, of his aid. I would just like to say, um, I'm, I'm quite elated. This has been a long time coming. We did pass, as corporation council said, the, the authority under the Illinois statute to do brand-new homes in, in 2021 in these areas. That was always, uh, a bit of a stretch. And as it turns out, we haven't seen one built, although there are actually a couple that are being proposed right now. But eight years ago, I, I started working, trying to work with our legislators to amend this statute so that it would include rehabs, which I felt were much more economically possible. Uh, uh, rehabs of, of owner-occupied homes, uh, which I thought was much more possible in these areas. And if that got going well enough, then we might start seeing, uh, new homes being built. We'll see. But I, um, I appreciate very much, uh, the leadership of our local legislative delegation. Uh, this was, uh, sponsored in the House, uh, by, uh, Representative Ryan Spain, but Jahan Gordon, Jahan Gordon Booth was right there with him all the way in making this bipartisan. The same, uh, in the Senate, um, we had actually, uh, Senator Kaler and, uh, Senator Stoller, uh, uh, involved. And I, I should add, I'm sorry, I should add, uh, Senator, Representative Weaver was also on board as part of our delegation. They managed to get this thing passed in Springfield with one no vote. So I'm, uh, uh, it takes a while. That passed in May. It was signed in July. We had a number of hoops to go through, and here we are. But I think, I certainly hope this will make a difference in, in some of our neighborhoods. Um, and, uh, to the benefit, not only of those neighborhoods, but benefit of the whole city. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Would you like to make a motion to receive and file?
That's a good idea. I will make such a motion to receive and file.
Okay. Can I get a second? Councilmember Valpula? Thank you. Questions? Um, Councilmember Seer?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Councilman Kelly, uh, this is outside-the-box thinking. And I watched you work on this. This was very important, uh, for you the last two years. And I just want to congratulate you publicly for your effort. It took a long time, but I hope that it will, uh, make a difference in, uh, Peoria. So thank you very much for your efforts.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? This is a motion to receive and file. Moved and seconded. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. Twenty-five dash fifty-one is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to approve a grant award to Lula NFP to reimburse hotel costs for unsheltered individuals in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand dollars. And on your desk, there is a yellow handout of a revised communication.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn the floor over to Director Doolan to walk through this item. And, uh, hopefully he, he can also answer any of council's questions as well.
Uh, thank you, Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Uh, the item in front of you is, uh, a request to, uh, continue the motel project, uh, with Lula. Uh, if you remember, we allocated about eighty thousand dollars on a reimbursement, uh, style program, uh, for them on, uh, housing unsheltered, um, people into a motel in our area. Uh, the item in front of you extends that for an additional three weeks. And, uh, I'll walk kind of through why the extension is, is necessary. So, uh, the eighty thousand dollars were able to fund them through almost the end of February. Uh, since then, they've been using their own private funds to keep the project going, uh, so the people in, uh, the motel aren't, uh, back, uh, into the streets of Peoria or in shelter, a different shelter. Um, since that time, we've had discussions with the, the state of Illinois about a grant they gave to, uh, the Home for All Continuum of Care through the United Way, uh, for a million dollars. That grant specifically, uh, is supposed to be used to target, uh, homelessness issues in our, it's the city of Peoria. Um, some of that money is earmarked to fund programs like, uh, Phoenix Community Development Services Bridge Project, uh, down in the North Valley. Uh, and then other funds have gone to different other things. Some money was specifically, uh, set aside to fund, uh, some initiative that, initiatives that came out of the Hundred Day Challenge. The Hundred Day Challenge, uh, phase of the project is still ongoing, and the funds from the state of Illinois have to be spent by June 30th. So because there's some additional funds left over there that have to be spent, uh, we had conversations with the Continuum of Care, uh, and United Way about continuing this program through June 30th. Because, uh, the way that, that the project is written, uh, we have to go back and file, the Continuum of Care has to go back and file a budget amendment with the state of Illinois, uh, to change the, the grant agreement to allow this for an eligible expense. Uh, that will not go into effect until, uh, the first of April, April 2nd. So there's a gap there between, uh, when Lula will run out of private funds and when, uh, the state funds might kick in. So back as part of the 2025 budget process, uh, the city council allocated about seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars, uh, to really address homelessness issues in our community, uh, specifically with the, the idea in mind that we were starting to enforce the ordinance about not camping in public places. Since that time, we've spent, uh, about a hundred and ninety thousand. The initial eighty thousand that went to, uh, Lula for the first phase of the motel project, and a hundred and ten thousand dollars that went to, uh, Dream Center for the extension, uh, of their capacity to, for their shelters for families. So we still have about six hundred thousand dollars left of that funds. Our original conversations with, um, the Continuum of Care and United Way was if we could be reimbursed for, uh, kind of our stopgap, stopgap financing. Uh, your yellow sheet, uh, was an update, and now I have an update to the yellow sheet. Uh, after a few different conversations, uh, with the state of Illinois this afternoon, uh, it is not going to be a reimbursable expense because they can't start charging to the grant until the grant agreement is officially executed. It'll likely go to the United Way Board, uh, next week, and then it has to go to, uh, Department of Human Services for their approval. So we're very hopeful that it'll go into effect April, between April 1st, April 2nd, around that time. Uh, but the money will not be reimbursable for essentially what, uh, we spend. So this will be an opportunity for us to spend that, that money, that's, that six hundred thousand dollars that's remaining for homelessness, uh, services in our community that we put in, uh, from, in the 2025 budget. That was originally, uh, some ARPA funding that we converted over to be able to use it for this into 2025. A couple of things, uh, I want to point out, some stats from the project and kind of where we're at with current things. Um, the next steps will be next council meeting, likely bringing you forward an agreement, uh, between the United Way and the City of Peoria. Uh, the United Way will take the grant funds, give them to the City of Peoria. We will pass them through Lula, uh, and have, we, the City of Peoria will have the, the agreement with Lula. I think the first phase of the project, on the motel project, was really about safety and getting people out during, uh, out, from outside during January and February. Uh, I think that part of the project was incredibly successful, uh, in keeping people safe and healthy during a really tough time of the year. Uh, kind of the next phase is really continuing to focus on those efforts around housing. Uh, but I think it's important that the city, in an agreement with this funding, puts some parameters in place to ensure, um, kind of we're on the same page. Uh, I think that we saw, uh, the project, uh, and the amount of people in the, the motel balloon at times during, during the worst weather. Uh, so one of the things that we would have in the agreement if approved tonight is ensuring that no more, uh, individuals are allowed to enter the project. Uh, we'll cap them where they're at today. Um, this, letting everyone know that, that the likelihood of funding for this project, uh, will be done, done June 30th as the state of Illinois expires. Uh, and kind of agreement from all the social service agencies and Lula included, that they won't encourage people, uh, after the project runs out to, uh, move back into public spaces and violate our ordinance. Um, residents will be, uh, requested and required to continue and engage with all the social service agencies. They've done that. We just want to make sure we kind of have that formalized in the agreement. Uh, all of our social service agencies have done a fantastic job working, uh, with the residents at the motel and Lula, uh, to really, to, to, to kind of be a one-stop-shop for everything you need, whether it's different identification, social services, uh, health services, all the things. They've done a really good job of kind of making that one location for all those things. Um, when someone leaves the project, whether they exit to a shelter or housing, they're not allowed to come back in. Really is about reducing that number and trying to get as many people as housed as possible. Uh, and then we're going to ask that residents, uh, work with us on some sort of agreeable code of conduct to ensure that, you know, they're not violating any other ordinances or laws, no trespassing on private property. We want to make sure they're respecting all the properties in the, the surrounding area as well. Uh, and so we'll just work on encouraging that. Um, with that said, the current motel project, the last numbers we have, there's 59 people currently in the motel. Um, at the peak of the project, there's approximately about 90 people. So we have seen a reduction. Um, since the project has started, we've seen about six residents that have been moved to permanent, uh, supportive housing. Four residents were moved to different treatment facilities. Uh, four residents were moved to the bridge project they actually mentioned, uh, earlier, and 11 of the residents moved from the motel to a shelter. Um, of the current 59 residents that are still at the hotel, uh, 16 of them, uh, have housing locations identified and are just waiting to sign leases and move in. Uh, we're hoping to get them moved in in the next two or three weeks. Uh, 18 of the residents that are there, uh, have all their paperwork completed and are starting the application and submitted applications, uh, to income-based apartment complexes in the area. Um, so we're, we're very excited about the progress that, that they made. Really appreciative of kind of Lula stepping up and running the project. Uh, I think it's important to, to point out that this project is completely volunteer-driven. Um, the money that we are expending is tracked, uh, by our department and is specifically reimbursable for motel costs, uh, and food and supply costs. So, uh, they go out, they pay the bills at Motel 6, they give us the receipt for Motel 6, we reimburse them. Uh, we've kept all itemized lists, and we haven't had any problems with, with record keeper and bookkeeping with them. It's gone really well. The other thing I kind of want to point out is, you know, June 30th is kind of The other thing I kind of want to point out is, you know, June thirtieth is kind of the, with the grant, State of Illinois grant, that's kind of the sunset date for what we'll have. It is likelihood that we will see some people from the motel project not being able to graduate to housing by then. So, I just, you know, want to set a clear expectation that, that the motel project continuing June thirtieth is not going to solve homelessness in our community. It's going to be a continued effort forever to continue to, to explore best practices, explore all the different options that we can to continue to work on this issue. But I think there's some really good positive things that's happening in our community that you all have supported and that the community has supported as well. Some of those projects are still in the works and taking some time, whether it's Phoenix Community Development Services repurposing Old Methodist College, which will essentially bring families experiencing homelessness in the Peoria area down to net zero. The Salvation Army recently announced their very large expansion of their capacity and completely revamping their campus. We've worked really closely with them to get a two-million-dollar grant from the State of Illinois to help with that. But the rest will be their private fundraising. Peoria Opportunities last week broke ground on Churchview Gardens down on six-one-six-oh-five that'll provide really quality, affordable housing in that area for residents. And we're hopefully, in the next month or so, Habitat Humanity will also be breaking ground on homeownership opportunities in that area on the former McKinley site. And lastly, we've seen some really good success by our flexible rent program. If you remember correctly, council, City Council and the Peoria County put money into a health equity fund. And then, the Health Department actually gave it back to us to administer our Flex Rent Program. It's essentially looking at those individuals that are homeless in our, homeless in our community but still having income. A really good example is this, an older lady who's on Social Security. She has an income and can qualify for housing, but she doesn't have the money for the first month and last month rent in a deposit. Our program provides that upfront, small, flexible money to get her into housing. And we've seen really good success in about nine months the program has been running. And that program runs through twenty-five and, two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six. And already, they've been able to, to secure and really positive situations about twenty-five households through that kind of direct case outreach by our staff. And finally, all, we've had really good collaboration by all of our social service agencies, whether it's the hospital systems, both hospital systems, our police department, the city staff, all of our nonprofit agencies on a Hundred Day Challenge that we're working through the Continuum of Care to really drill down on some of those issues that can help us in the long run. Some of their biggest things they're focusing on are peer support networks for those who are experiencing homeless, to those who have experienced it in the past and how they got out of it. And second, kind of how we can encourage more landlords to make their units available for people who are experiencing homelessness and getting them to understand kind of the need. We need them to step in the community and offer that housing for them. So, with that said, happy to answer any questions about the item that you have.
Thank you, Director Doolin. That was a lot of information in a short period of time.
I wanted to make sure I covered it all.
Well, he does deserve that applause. I want to thank you and your team for your leadership in, in this, you know, community effort. And really thank Lula for stepping up, yeah, and Keshi. Yes, for everyone, everyone in the group, Lula organization stepping up with the interventions that you have. And all of our stakeholders, as you mentioned, all of our social service and Continuum of Care and, and all these organizations. I want to give a little bit of context to the additional two-hundred-thousand dollars that is forthcoming through a state award that was awarded to the Continuum of Care paid through the United Way. Councilman Tim Riegenbach and I have been kind of working behind the scenes with staff and, and with the intention of trying to find some long-term solutions. Because we know this is a Band-Aid temporary situation. But really trying to identify potential alternatives, just like, you know, the, the, the rest of the partners are trying to help to identify some alternatives. We went with staff to tours a building that wasn't feasible. He's probably going to talk about a potential tiny homes project. But we, you know, put our heads together to try to identify some additional money that might extend the time beyond February the twenty-eighth when the funding would, would disappear. So, I was able to reach out to Christine Haley, and she is the State of Illinois Homelessness Chief. She works out of the governor's office. And I asked her for, to help us to identify some additional funding to extend the motel stays for the unhoused population that was staying there. And she got right on it. She just, within a short period of time, and she was keeping me updated day by day, she reached out to the Continuum of Care and the United Way and asked if they would be willing to take that two-hundred-thousand dollars or some of it, or some, or a portion of it, and through a sub-grant opportunity, pass that on to the city so that the city could then continue to reimburse the Lula organization through June the thirtieth. And the initial thought that we might get fifty, eighty thousand dollars for this turned into an agreement for two-hundred-thousand dollars. And it's really, Christine stepped up with the, took the leadership to intervene in this way. So, I want to say thank you very much to the State of Illinois Homeless, Homelessness Chief. I want to say thank you very much to the Continuum of Care and the United Way for agreeing to allow this money for this specific purpose. And I want to thank my partner, Councilman Riegenbach, for continuing to work really passionately on trying to help find some additional solutions. So, with that, I'm going to, his, his light was on first. So, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Riegenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Doolin, thank you for that. I was going to say thumbnail sketch, but that was more like an encyclopedia. But thank you for the detail that you provided there. And I was trying to write down a few of the numbers as he was talking. And if I wrote down the numbers correctly and if he, and did the right math, about twenty-five people have gone from the motel project into other housing situations. So, it truly has been a bridge for a significant number of people. I had sixteen or eighteen, I couldn't remember what you said, have pending applications for permanent housing pending. I think that's important to know, that we've said this all along, that this is not the long-term solution, as the mayor alluded, but this is a, a, a bridge. It's, it's a way to protect our most vulnerable citizens at a time during the winter months when it was so frigidly cold and even last week when it was frigidly cold. So, this project has been a success at so many levels. Currently, we have fifty-nine people there, if I wrote down the numbers correctly. And as, as, as a guy who works in finance during the day, I, I need to talk about the return on investment. The city, if we approve this thirty-nine thousand dollars tonight, will have committed a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars of our ARPA money, which we had earmarked for these housing issues. A hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars of our money is going to provide shelter for up to eighty people, it was at one time, for six months. What an incredible investment of city dollars to really help bridge an situation that is being discussed and talked about around the country. So, clearly, I'm going to be supporting this motion tonight as we again, put that bridge in place between what Lula has already spent out of their own coffers once again until the state grant comes through. But just wrap your arms around that for a minute, folks, that we're going to be able to have sheltered eighty-some people for up to six months with this kind of investment. I think that's something we can all be proud of. And I, I know we've got a lot of work to do in the next four months before that June thirtieth deadline. Can I talk about the tiny homes now or should I? You, you've heard me talk about tiny homes probably at every council meeting since the ordinance was passed in November. And I, I shared a, a link with my colleagues. There's an organization called New Beginnings in Northwest Arkansas that is a very similar-sized city like Peoria. It's ninety thousand people, so a little bit smaller. And they have, they call them cabins rather than homes, tiny cabins. And they are able to house about twenty-five people in it because it, it's again, a very modest model. It costs a lot to get it started. It costs about a million and a half to get this up and running. But it has, they have twenty cabins, and then, they have a community room which has laundry facilities. It has the washrooms, it has the showers, it has those common spaces. But every person there has their own space to go into. So, when they need space, they have it. When they need the community, they have it. It's, it's, it's something that I think is very intriguing. And many communities, even our neighbor to the east, Bloomington, is proposing, has a proposal going forward on that. So, I think this is something that we really need to look at. There's organizations around the country that have done this. We don't have anybody stepping up to the plate yet. But I think it behooves us as a council to dig a little deeper, find out what the costs are, what the ongoing costs are, what the staffing needs are, how that all comes together so that on June thirtieth, you know, it might be a little aggressive to have something in place by then. But we need to be aggressive right now. And I think this is a great step. So, to my colleagues, please take a look at the email that I sent out last night. And to those of you that didn't get it, I'm happy to share it with you. But New Beginnings in Northwest Arkansas has an amazing program that I think is worth our taking a closer look at. So, I, I'm probably rambling a little bit. But one final thing, besides recognizing Keshi Bernard in the audience and the work that she did when nobody else was stepping up to the plate to, to put this motel project in place with their own funding. And Lula has got the ball rolling when the city funding was totally expired, extended. Lula again stepped up and has bridged that gap. So, this is a great way for us to, to show our appreciation for those efforts. And Nicole Morrow, our Housing Coordinator, also deserves recognition tonight for her multi-weekly meetings with the other service providers, whether it's Phoenix, Dream Center, Salvation Army, Lula. She has really done a yeoman's job in coordinating things and making the connections that have allowed those twenty-five people to find permanent housing in the last two and a half months. So, thank you both, and thank you for everybody, Director Doolin, on your staff that has, has spent an amazing amount of time on this. And with that all said, Mayor, I would move for approval.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Continued discussion, Councilmember Gordon Young.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You said everything I was going to say. Councilmember Riegenbach, but I, I echo your, your sentiments and your passion and your excitement. I had the opportunity to visit yesterday the motel project and was blown away. Blown away for many reasons. One, because of the, the dedication of the Lula team, but also having seen so many people that I know from the jail, living there. And they're stable. They are clean, they are safe, they are happy. I had never seen them in such a wonderful state. And most importantly, what I saw, and I just think that we really need to, and I'm hearing the commandments, but we really need to understand the magnitude of the work that this team is doing. They have relationships, and that's what matters. I mean, I can't even express deeply enough the, the love and the support that I, that I witnessed in the times that I was there. And I think everything that we can do to support this project is, is definitely valued, and that's that return of investment. That is the quality of life, but it's also public safety, public safety. And, and again, just to reiterate, when I'm saying I'm seeing people that I typically will see at the jail, I'm seeing them here, these aren't people who are committing violent crimes. These are people who sometimes just need a warm place to go. And so, it may be some petty crime to just get indoors, right? But again, I want to commend Keshi and, and the entire team. And if, I just wonder if we could have them come up, if they're here. I saw one, yeah, I saw both of them, the two that I met with yesterday. If we could do that, I think that's important, just to acknowledge the work that they're doing.
Keshi, want to take just a couple of minutes? If you can pull yourself together, right?
I'm always so emotional in here, you guys. I can't thank our supporters enough. And I know some of you have had reservations, and that's fair. We, we have been doing the work, but we did it, you know, we just dug in and did it. So, we didn't always get the public acknowledgement. But for those of you who have stopped by, called me, emailed me, and most importantly, supported me, but not just me, Lula, and our participants, it's to everything, you guys. We've actually had ninety-three people come through shelter. So, that's, that's huge, right? That's, there are no tent encampments right now. And it's because of your support. And I have to publicly thank not only all of you, you did all vote unanimously at the last vote. And it's been scary, right? Our, our participants are eating dinner right now anxiously awaiting this vote because if you don't vote in favor, they're out on the street Friday. That's the hard reality. And we've made so much progress, as you have all said. And it would be lost, they'd be lost to care. But I need to thank our public supporters. We are a publicly funded, all-donation-based, all-volunteer organization. Peoria showed up. You guys showed up, and the Peoria community showed up for our most vulnerable residents. And then, I have to thank our volunteers. Tara, you should be up here. You volunteer and support us. But we have a participant up here who's super excited. And then, I have to thank my peer staff. Everyone here and here came through Lula's program over the last five years. And they volunteer their time. We are a twenty-four-seven operation. They volunteer their time to make the motel run. We wouldn't be a success without the peers that serve the community that they are a part of. So, I want to thank all of you and Krista and him and our service providers. And they've dug in. We all have full-time daytime jobs. And we just, we couldn't do it without all the support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor? Can, can we, Keshi, could she talk about like how people can donate? Because there, there's a...
Very, very quickly, because I, I need to keep, we need to keep going.
So, one of our most biggest expenses outside of the motel rooms is food. We have sixty-one Hungry Vellies. And so, we do have a meal train. And if you go to Lula Peoria's Facebook page, you can donate those meals. One meal is the cost equivalent of somebody staying in a room for a week. And then, just for other basic line items like rooms, supplies, food, hygiene, we have all the ways to donate there as well. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree with everything said by Councilman Riegenbach as well. I think it was very well said, and we do need to start exploring long-term options. I think we all understand this is a Band-Aid, but it's a necessary Band-Aid. It's a Band-Aid that was required because last year, we passed a camping ordinance. You know, that ordinance reminds me of the old adage that the law and its majesty prohibits the rich and poor alike from sleeping under bridges. You know, so, we passed that ordinance, and before it went into effect, Lula stepped up. They stepped up using their own funds with no expectation... They stepped up using their own funds with no expectation that we would reimburse them at that point. They had no promise. They took the initiative. They took the initiative of, of putting our homeless population in motels before they could be forcibly evicted, possibly arrested. I know people like to say that wouldn't have happened, but what if somebody refused to leave? Just takes one person. Before anybody got frostbite, they, they were put in a safe shelter. And then we, we did step up. We stepped up. We reimbursed Lula for their, their kindness and their activism and their good-heartedness. And here we are again today. I know the weather's better, but you, you gotta think about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. If, if you don't have shelter, you can't deal with your mental illness. If you don't have shelter, you can't deal with your addiction problems. I know some people like to say, well, that's the real problem. No, it's not. If you're worried about where you're gonna eat your protein next, if you're worried about dying on the street corner, then you, you can't work on those. It's, it's very difficult. And yeah, it bothers me. People say that the ordinance is working because they don't see anybody on the street corner. Yeah, because of Lula. Because of Lula. That's, that's why, that's why we don't have people on the street corner begging on every street corner, on, on every park bench after the encampment, encampments. It really is them. They, they really did it, not us. And we're here just trying to help them keep going. You know, this is a, this is a short-term solution. We, we have, we have some models in other cities, you know, Arkansas, I mean, Rockford's had effective zero homelessness. I think they have, they have a national organization that I, I think there's, there's some investors that, you know, are, are not looking for returns, that are willing to help nonprofits buy homes and put homeless people in homes. But you know, permanent housing is what they need and we're slowly getting it to them. But you know, right now, this is a stopgap funding bill until we can start getting some state grants, which carries us to June 30th, you know, which time it starts getting warmer. We'll have that conversation then, but this is an easy vote, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilman Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Doolin. I'm gonna support the motion. But again, two of the, three of the people who spoke today just said that how important it is to kind of support this and I'm gonna do that. But again, if you, if you are listening to these conversations, it, it entails that we need to find a quick solution if we are going that route. So I, I mean, I like the idea of tiny homes. There are several things like that. I just found something else. It's called accessory dwelling units. It's the same kind of thing. It's called nanny homes. You don't need much space, 600, I think, close to 600 square, square foot. That's all it is. But that's not what I wanted to ask you. So we've been accumulating a lot of land bank. And let's say we wanted to open that land bank to build a complete housing or attract entrepreneurs to come down and kind of build housing at an affordable pricing range. I know that we, I may be wrong, but there is a thing called low income housing tax credit. That's what we use for, I think, Taft homes and wood, wood, woodlands, woodlands apartments. So what, where do we stand with that right now?
So I can have Assistant Director Allison provide a report back on kind of what we do and don't allow with accessory dwelling units. We're pretty actually flexible with what we could and don't allow in our city. As far as anyone who's listening who would like to build on any vacant lot the city of Peoria owns, please call Matt Smith immediately. We're happy to, to do that. In regards to tax credit projects, Peoria's been incredibly successful the last three years. The Methodist, the Phoenix Methodist Conversion Project is a Lytech tax credit that they're hoping to close in June or July. The Churchview Gardens that broke ground about a month ago is a Lytech's tax credit project. And then Peoria Opportunities Foundation is putting in for another Lytech's tax credit for affordable housing in this cycle. Unfortunately, each year they, they give about 10 of them throughout the state of Illinois. Two years ago, we were the only community in Illinois to get two of them outside of Chicago. Last year, unfortunately, they reduced the amount down to about seven or eight got them and Peoria, the application we put in did not get selected. I mean, I, I think when we talk about all of housing development, the next few months are going to possibly be a struggle on what federal funds are and aren't, aren't available. I think, you know, we talked about this specific item being a Band-Aid approach to this problem. Essentially with the, the path they're doing and, and you know, I, I agree with all the, the compliments to Lula, they've done a fantastic job. But there's a lot of other agencies involved and I think Keshi would tell you how appreciative she is of, you know, Carl, OSF, Heartland Health, all coming to the site to support their efforts. Social Security Administration, I believe, has a day coming up where they're coming to help get social security numbers updated and cards for residents, even Peoria County with birth certificates. So it's been a huge collaborative effort to get many agencies doing that. And so while it is a Band-Aid approach, I think the reality is with the progression they make, even just right now, you know, probably in the next two months, hopefully, we can have about 30 of the individuals that are there in, in housing at the basic trajectory. So it is a Band-Aid approach and, 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 you know, we need more long-term solutions, but they're gonna be harder to find over the next few years and a lot of it's gonna come down to funding and dollars of what's available. And, and unfortunately, it's gonna take state funding and federal funding. You know, the, the Salvation Army project that they announced to increase their capacity is about an $18 million project. The city just isn't an opportunity to, to really substantially fund a project like that currently. And so we were able to work with them and kind of lend our expertise to get a $2 million grant from the state of Illinois to help with that project. So that's really where we come in. But, but it's gonna be a struggle finding funding and that's really kind of where long-term solutions come in. And I think, you know, Peoria's in a good spot where we have an affordable housing. And so that's why one of the goals of the 100 Day Challenge is really to focus on improving relationships with the landlord community and appreciate, you know, increasing their willingness for them to rent some of our housing. So I know I answered a lot of your questions there, so happy to, to follow up on any of the things I said as well.
Just for my knowledge sake, what is the percentage of tax credit for this kind of things?
I will, maybe the, the manager knows off the top of his head.
Generally, there's, there's two types of tax credits. There's a 9% affordable housing tax credit and a 4% affordable housing tax credit. The nine is very competitive. Usually there's, there's only one or two projects that are approved downstate. It's run through the Illinois Housing Development Agency or Authority, not an agency. And, and so the four percents are generally more available and that's something that it just really depends on the nature of the project, the amount of, of other financing that people have in place. You know, putting together affordable housing projects is a lot like, you know, you're, you're putting together layers of a marble cake. You're just putting a whole bunch of different resources together in order to make it work. You know, we've had discussions about the investment that we've put federal home dollars into Phoenix projects in the past as a way to try and leverage, you know, additional dollars that they're raising. So it just becomes a challenge to try and put all those pieces together to make a project work. We do have a lot of land in the land bank, so there is an opportunity for us to certainly look at that. It could also be a pivot for the land bank to start to look at acquiring properties where there are structures on it that maybe we can rehab. So I think that gives us some, some more discussion that we can certainly have at the land bank meetings, so.
Just for my clarity, I, I still have a question on that. So how much was allocated in the Illinois state budget for this kind of grants? And how much did we get?
For Lytech projects?
Uh huh.
I'll have to get back to you. I can give you, it's pretty easy to pull off the internet. I just don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, and I've been looking at different grant opportunities to see if we can adopt that. One of the things that caught my eye was the permanent supportive housing grant that is particularly for people with disabilities, mental illness, or those who are chronically homeless. Can you throw some light on that as well?
Yeah, those applications were due February 27th with IDA and Phoenix Community Development Services applied. When they did the conversion project for Old Methodist College, based on kind of the complexity of the problem, they actually weren't gonna renovate or touch the seventh floor. So they applied specifically for that funding to finish the seventh floor into some non-congregate housing respite care. So essentially taking the bridge that they're doing down in a group home and expanding that to the seventh floor. And then Salvation Army for renovations of their family shelter have also applied for that specifically. And I, I just looked at that today. So with those applications, I think there's about $35 million available throughout the state and I think there were six total applications submitted, so it's hopeful for our local organizations because four of them were from the Chicago area and two were from Peoria area and the rest of the state didn't see many.
Thank you, Director Doolin. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Director Doolin, I want to add my thanks to the yeoman's work your department has done in this. You've helped make a bridge from people living in tents to people being sheltered, being fed, and looking toward the future. I, my, my hat is really off to you, sir. Today I had a very long conversation with Keshi, a very good conversation with her. Talking about, I guess, some of my pet concerns. And I, I, to me, there are three steps we need to keep in mind for folks who are homeless, folks who have problems that brought them to homelessness. Number one, and we're, we're, we're doing this fairly well, we need to keep doing it well, and that's shelter and food. I would like to put a plug in, I don't know if it's proper or not, but Lula does accept contributions from the community. We've got a very, very generous community here. I stacked up against other cities our size and cities much larger. The people at Peoria are very generous and some of these agencies live on a shoestring. In the case of Lula, most of the people who work there are volunteers and they're, they're doing a yeoman's job. But okay, shelter first and we're, we're handling that now. The future is a little foggy. We'll, we'll see where it goes. Next, we need detox services and mental health services for a lot of these folks. And again, our not-for-profit community does step up. We, we need more of this. These, these, these are, these are regular human beings. These are, these are God's children, okay? They're not to be thrown away. We have to believe in them enough to help them. And so that second phase, I think, is, is very, very important. And then you get past that second phase, we need much more concentration on recovery These are facilities where the people there are all trying to get over some of these, some of these difficulties and supporting each other in that. And when one of them falls down, and they do, there are others to pull them back. Now, this is down the road, but I think, I think we cannot forget the potential that, that these folks have. They've got just as much potential as anybody else, but they've, many of them, many of them have, have fallen off, but they can get back on the horse. And I think our community needs to step up and help them with these further steps. So anyway, my conversation today with Keshi changed my mind on my vote tonight. And, and so I, I will be voting yes and thank you, Madam Mayor.
You will what?
Pardon?
What did you just say?
I said, I, I will be voting yes.
Oh, okay.
And, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. Thank you.
Mayor, could I just add one thing about the, the mental, the health thing? So when we started the 100 Day Challenge, one of the biggest issues that a lot of the providers who are providing direct street outreach mentioned was sometimes getting those mental health assessments done by our healthcare industry. And I think one of the best things that have come out of this and the work on the 100 Day Challenge is that collaborative effort of having the mental assessments done and people of the mental health professions going out to, to the motel project. So there's still a lot to do on that front and a lot of probably structural infrastructure type changes on the state and national level about how we handle those things and the funding available. But even that first step of getting those mental assessments that can help with other things in the future has, has been just a positive impact of all this.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Motion approves unanimously.
25-52 is a communication from the City Manager, Corporation Counsel, and Director of Community Development with a request to deny the following. A, an ordinance emitting Chapter 18, Article 14, Section 18-631, existing tobacco retail licenses of the city's municipal code. And B, an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C-2 large-scale commercial district for a Class II tobacco or alternative nicotine product sales use for the property located at 1301 West Pioneer Parkway, Peoria, Illinois.
Mr. Manager? Or Council, Corporation Counsel Hayes? One of you.
I'm fortunate that I have Assistant Director Allison, Deputy Director Allison here for support and comment. I wanted to mention that we have structured our tobacco ordinance for Class II ordinances with a cap. An applicant came forward asking for a Class II tobacco use at 1301 West Pioneer Parkway. The zoning committee reviewed the item and out of deference to the city council's cap, denied, recommended denial. This is structured this way to give the council absolute discretion over whether first to entertain expanding the cap. The refusal to expand the cap is much less controversial if challenged than refusing a use in a particular place. And so it's only when council decides that the cap's gonna be extended, that the council would take up substantively whether, whether this place is the appropriate spot for a Class II. So I just want to mention that because this is the first time we've been through this episode in this fashion after we adopted the cap. I appreciate you allowing me to go on, Your Honor, but I don't have any, anything else to add other than what's in the council communication, which was a hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission Committee and a recommendation for denial. One motion to deny, if that's, if that's successful, would be sufficient to resolve the issues here tonight. But if the motion would be the other way, then council would make that motion and we would take up item A first and then item B. Thank you.
Welcome. This business is actually located in the 5th District. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to deny this request.
Seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Any other- Any other questions? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Do we need to deny, is it okay just to deny it and include A and B? Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash fifty-three is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comtroller with a request to receive and file the month ended January 31, 2025, an audited financial report.
Mr. Manager, I don't see your...
Director Craddy's under the weather, so you get me tonight to walk through the January financial report. Obviously, this is the first month of the year. Just quickly, on page seven in the report, we have our general fund analysis. Overall revenues in the general fund right now are 44% lower than compared to expected budget, but that's only in this first month of the year. We're looking at overall expenditures are also down 7.3% compared to what would be expected as the budget to date, and up slightly over last year's spending, which is to be expected. If we look at everything overall, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in all funds, revenues right now for the city, again, just one month into the year, are about $7.2 million lower than expected, but expenses are about $11.3 million lower than expected. So, you know, as we look at, we try and structure that out over the course of the year. We're in a pretty, it's pretty early, I guess, right now to say anything major about that. We have looked at our major, five major revenue sources, which is the home rule sales tax, the state sales tax, income tax, and personal property replacement tax. And just a couple of points there. Overall, home rule sales taxes in January were up from 2024, so that's positive. State sales taxes for the month of January are up from 2024 slightly. Income taxes are up in January from 2024. And then lastly, and unfortunately, personal property revenue, replacement tax revenues are going to be down considerably all year long. That's something we'll be continuing to monitor, but it's been a significant change in the way that the state is allocating those personal property replacement taxes. And I anticipate that where we had a peak in that revenue stream of nearly $22 million, we may be under or right around $10 million this year. So it's frustrating, to say the least. Hopefully, we'll see some of that work its way into our income tax proceeds and collections as we see that. Overall, then, in the last couple of pages, Pages nine and 10 of the handout do give you the snapshot of where we are, again, one month into the year. It's pretty difficult to really ascertain any trends at this point in time. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Okay. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I just, I'm gonna go easy and really not ask any questions tonight since Mr.
Thank you, sir.
Craddy is not here. But obviously, for me, when I look at the yield curve, it's been inverted, so we have a lot of cash in play here. And I'm sure that Mr. Craddy's probably looking at our cash flow. But I just want to make just one comment tonight, really. I'm very, very concerned, and I know Director Craddy is very concerned also about the next few months. But he always writes down, "The city will need to take extra caution." So what scares me more than anything else right now is the fact that five of us are running for election and to keep our seat. And whether I'm back or not, and I want to make sure that everybody understands, that is, it's critical to pay attention to our cash flow the next six months or so. There's so much going on right now that, please, please, let's just keep an eye on our cash flow and try to keep our cash on hand right here with the city. So thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll move to receive, this is a receive and file, I believe? Yes, I'll move to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember...
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I forgot to ask one question. Director, I mean, or Mr. Manager, the only question I had, we did not see an end-of-year report. When will we see this end-of-year report?
Well, we had, we did have a 12-month financial report that came out last month, but I can certainly talk to Director Craddy.
I don't think we received that. Director Craddy told me it was delayed, so I think it would be important for all of us to see.
We'll make sure we get it out to everybody.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, Madam Mayor. Move to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any other questions? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On a lighter note, Mr. Manager, I think you are wise to encourage Director Craddy to be sick right at the beginning of the year so that there weren't too many questions. And so, very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly, waiting for your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Twenty-five dash twenty-two is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use ordinance number 14654 as amended in a Class R for a single-family residential district to remove properties located at 2925 3003, 3010, and 3027 North 12 Oaks Drive from the boundary of the special use for elderly housing for properties located at 3026 North Parish Avenue, 2902, 2925, 3003, 3004, 3006, 3008, 3009, 3010, 3015, 3019, 3020, 3021, 3022, 3024, and 3027 North 12 Oaks Drive and 1010 West Forest Hill Avenue, all in Peoria, Illinois.
Mr. Manager, thank you.
Thank you. This item was deferred. This is a proposed modification to a development on 12 Oaks Drive. I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Director Lee Allison to walk through what's being asked of the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I'll just give a brief summary. This is a property located along 12 Oaks Drive, the 2,000 to 3,000 block, centrally located. The property is about five acres in total and has an existing special use for elderly housing, dates back from 1959.
Wow.
Yeah. So part of the property developed with duplexes, wonderful duplexes that were intended for senior residents. Part of the property has not developed and has never developed. And that is the request before you today, is to remove the remaining undeveloped property, just shy of two acres, comprises about four lots, remove that property from the special use, allowing it to be developed, probably for duplexes, but allowing the residents to be, no age restrictions, so open to any residents of the property, not limited to elderly housing. So the real change is just allowing the development, which the developers indicated will be duplexes, but allowing those to be occupied by any persons that wish to reside there. So the benefit is new development, new housing, which is a great opportunity for that area and then for any residents. So is there any questions that I can answer?
It doesn't look like it, but Councilman Grab, this is your district, did you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff and I met with the neighbors, and we've had much discussion about it. I'm very much in favor of removing the elderly stipulation as proposed by our staff. These are market rate units, they're going to really be positive for a very quiet neighborhood, it's going to stay quiet. And I believe Developer Arbuckle and Pastor Marlon Young will continue to do a great job there, and it'll be a stable anchor for that neighborhood. So I'm on board to approve it as proposed by staff, Mayor.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Reaganbach. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Councilmember Seer, there we go. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Director Allison. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-five dash twenty-three is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to adopt an ordinance approving updates in Chapter 9.5, Section 19 dash 142, and Chapter 31 of the Code of the City of Peoria to improve stormwater management policies and procedures.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to Director Powers to give us a quick overview of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, councilors, good to see you all. We have talked about this one briefly in first reading. In essence, this is a cleanup of various areas in the area of how we do calculations and, quite frankly, an update of tables relative to rainfall in our area that were last updated in 1989 and have since been updated in 2000, excuse me, I believe 2020, which, note, believe it or not, an increased amount of rainfall since 1989, which is not common or you wouldn't think. That, using those tables and applying them on development or new development, will result in an increased amount that someone would pay to develop because the table, of course, shows a greater amount of rainfall that now has to be managed in the development or retained on site. So again, an added cost either through retention or the fee that they would pay for the permit to do the development. Beyond that specific point and a monetary impact, everything else basically clarifies definitions, how we would recover anyone that was, say, in violation of working without a permit or starting work without a permit, what the consequences would be in that regard. Definitions, again, you see things, if you say free board, you probably think board it is not. It's the depth of a detention area above what the designed area is or what the pond was designed for. So again, it's kind of just offering that type of cleanup and definitions across the boards, kind of clearing a whole lot of things up that, and you get into science quickly on the computations, if you will, relative to rainfall. And again, it also adds mobile home parks because, again, mobile homes are impervious surface, the pads they sit on are impervious, and hence we're adding those as well to be collecting that fee. I believe that is a pretty Reader's Digest-level summary of all of the changes. Again, most of it is cleanup, with the exception of the tables that do show increased rainfall for our area, which will affect development. Just not a lot, but it will affect it.
Questions? Councilmember Grab?
Director, what does the acronym NPDES stand for?
National, excuse me, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. It's a permit, well, it's actually, that's the overall system that the federal government has put in place for us locals to, or required to have a permit relative to the management of stormwater. And it's a permit that we have, that we have to maintain those guidelines within to maintain our open permit, basically. It's a permit that we have to renew, I believe, annually.
Do we have any indication that the feds have any heartburn with our green model and its implementation and how it's working out for us? Very big issue for this community going forward.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, councilor, forgive me. No, we do not. You would normally see that as a result of if we violated it, what happens is you lose your flood protection insurance. If we were to start deviating from the standards on NPDES, if you will, and forgive me, NPDES is what we mostly call it, if we were to, say, start granting variances, which some municipalities do, they usually will have to show some alternative means of managing that stormwater. If you just flat disregard it, the federal government will negate your eligibility for flooding. That's the consequence, and we have not been in any danger of that happening. In fact, our maps were just updated recently, and we want to go through them and start educating some people where the flood plain has changed to a certain degree in our area. Because it is affected by that as well.
Our city representatives had to make the case to the EPA that we were able to do a green model, and we didn't have to do the gray fix, which would have involved foreign contractors. And there was an article recently, I think in The Star, about some runoff that got into the river. I think that's inevitable with some of our big storms. We are operating under a storm that we're trying to compensate for that occurred in 1949 before Christmas. Isn't that amazing? 1949 before Christmas. And that's kind of like our benchmark or our guideline. So I'm glad to hear that because many of us on the council, when we directed staff to settle, do the consent decree, were convinced that the green model would work. And I think the green model is working, and then we're embedding it, integrating it in with some of our road projects, for example, right now Moss Avenue and other...
That's correct. I'm sorry, we'll be before you with year four, the next council meeting.
Yes, sir, all over town. And so, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Powers, there's two new projects going on in the Fifth District right now. My question is, which standard will they have to abide by? The old standard or the new standard?
The old standard. If we have them, if we have them in our possession, it'll be the old standard. Anything that we receive prior to adoption will apply the old standard.
Okay. Now, just from my personal knowledge, would these new residential subdivision qualify or not qualify, but uphold the new standard? Would they, would they, would the new standard be their standard? I mean, would they qualify, so to speak?
Well, no, we would apply the old standard.
I know, I understand what you said, and maybe you cannot answer the question, but just what, my question is, if they had to abide by the new standard, would they, would they qualify? If they had to?
I don't know what they're designing. I mean, that's, it depends, again, you apply the tables to the impervious area, and this pipe size is the detention, there are a lot of variables in the computation of impervious surface and runoff and detention requirements. So I can't answer that question specifically without knowing what they're building.
Mr. Manager, would you know, or Mr. Hayes, would you, gentlemen, know the answer to my question?
So first, as to what applies, Section 4 of the ordinance before you specifically indicates that applications for erosion, sediment, and stormwater permits that have been submitted prior to the day of the ordinance would be subject to the ordinance sections in existence at the time of the submission. Recall that when this was originally presented for first reading, that question was presented, and so the ordinance before you has been modified to be specific on that issue, and that's consistent with how courts would generally approach these types of amendments. They would not apply prior to their effective date. As to any of the subdivision standards, there are some adjustments to these standards that would impact the technical issues that come to bear. But our prior standards were significant and helped with a lot of issues. There are some reaction to some of the water and rain-type event standards that have been adjusted to reflect our current experiences with the climate. And it wouldn't surprise me if, in some aspects, some of the old standards aren't as significant, don't have as much requirement for volume and capacity as the new standards do. So that may not materially affect people's experience, but the numbers are different. So then the new numbers will apply to new subdivisions going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Madam Mayor, move to adopt the new ordinance.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Any other questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
If there's no further unfinished business, we would be on to new business.
Is there any new business? No new business.
Then we would be on to citizens' opportunity to address the city council. Then we would be on to citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
We have eight residents that are going to address the council, beginning with Jess Hill. Jess?
Good evening, Mayor Dr. Ali and city council. The time is now. The 2025-2026 edition of the Central Illinois Homeschoolers Resource Guide is now available in print and digital format. Our slogan is "Connect with the Community." Our mission statement: To promote quality, responsible homeschooling tips and ideas and connect children with the community. Our vision: Give homeschooled children and their families representation, a sense of belonging, equal opportunities, and a presence in the greater Peoria area. Here's what to expect in this year's edition. Additional tips, suggestions, and ideas for getting started with homeschooling, a directory of educational supplies, textbook publishers, and internet-based curriculums, how to get a job, a driver's license, and register to vote, expanded volunteer opportunities, a list of city council meetings with the times and locations listed for kids to learn about municipal civics and government and get an experience on public speaking, like those children earlier today, for example. And we have an interview with a Central Illinoisan who is a former homeschooler and works in the arts and education. Those who are tuning in on the YouTube livestream or on eighty-nine-point-nine FM and are interested in obtaining a digital or even a paperback copy, get your pens and pencils and paper ready and you can contact me, Jessamyn Hill, at jhill85713@gmail.com. That's J-H-I-L-L eight-five-seven-one-three at gmail dot com. Put "2025 Homeschooling Green Book" in the subject line and I'll send you a copy. The C.I.H.R.G. is reminding you that April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. It sounds stereotypical, but domestic and child abuse happens behind closed doors in homeschool settings. Unlike their traditional schooling counterparts, violence as well as academic neglect goes unreported. I should know because personally, I went through it and so did my nine siblings growing up. For those who know, there is family violence and academic delinquency going on amongst loved ones. The C.I.H.R.G. has contact information for DCFS, the Center for Prevention of Abuse, as well as the Regional Office of Education. Remember, if you see something, say something. Now, before this book went to press, it is announced that the Illinois General Assembly is proposing a House bill that will impact homeschooling in the land of Lincoln. House Bill twenty-eight-twenty-seven, the Homeschool Act. The provision of this bill consists of the following. Parents and guardians doing the teaching must have a high school diploma or equivalent. You'll have to register with the school district and submit an educational portfolio, allow optional dual enrollment for homeschoolers to attend public school, require immunizations and medical exams or religious exemptions if partaking in dual enrollment, and adherence to truancy laws. I included the link to the Illinois General Assembly on page four in the resource guide. Another bill took effect immediately this year that allows homeschoolers to participate in public school sports. Information on Senate Bill SB zero-zero-nine-six is also on page four in the resource guide. So, please enjoy reading this year's edition of the Central Illinois Homeschoolers Resource Guide. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to promote my resource guides at these meetings and for bringing to your attention House Bill twenty-eight-twenty-seven. Let us keep making a difference for all kids in the city of Peoria and our neighbors surrounding us.
Thanks, Jess. It looks great. Our next speaker is Heather Polkinghorn. Polken-Norn.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Peoria City Council members and residents of the city of Peoria. My name is Heather Polkinghorn. I am a peer worker of Lula Peoria. I am a person with lived experience in homelessness and chaotic substance use. May nineteenth of this year, my husband Doug and I will be two years, I'm going to try not to get emotional, but it's an emotional evening. May nineteenth of this year, my husband and I will be two years sober, two years since we were part of the unsheltered population in Peoria and five years since we first met Keshi and Jessica, the co-founders of Lula. I come today to tell you a brief part of my story. In January of twenty nineteen, I came to Peoria in active addiction, trying to escape the pain that was my life. The spring after I got here, I met my now partner of five years, Doug, and before we knew it, we were homeless and only had each other. COVID was in full swing and the list of places we couldn't go was steadily growing, making it close to impossible to find food and water. It seemed like downtown Peoria was the place that local grassroots service providers would be with stuff to help and that's how we met Keshi. Thinking just like the rest, we would probably never see her again, but she kept coming day after day and now, five years later, I can say that I believe she is the reason we are still alive. She was kind and understanding and really understood what support was needed in order to help us better our lives. She was consistent, always showed up and continued to help us and others through the work that Lula does. Today, I stand before you, living proof that the work that Lula does changes lives. I wanted to thank you all so much for your support. Thanks for your time.
Welcome. Thank you. Keshi? Keshi Bernard?
I don't want to take up your time. I know we're all tired. I just want to say thank you again, all of you. It is important and the changes and positive outcomes are real and measurable. So, thank you again. And now, I'm going to go tell everyone at the motel that they're safe. We're going to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara? Tara Wood?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff. I'll try to be short, too. Thank you. I don't really know where to start. I feel like Madam Mayor and Councilmember Reganbach really championed a lot of what we're seeing with Lula getting additional funding. And then Joe Doolan, who's not here, I guess, that was pretty wild, all those numbers and everything. So, I want to thank him as well. We heard that, from people who went and saw what was, you know, at the motel, we've heard it called, sorry, my notes here, Reganbach called it "a bridge to housing." And I want to thank you all for supporting that bridge. We heard it called "a place for public safety," "a place to improve quality of life." We heard about it being the return on investment, which is like fiscal responsibility. I mean, all of these things, I want to thank you for supporting. And a lot of these things are in the strategic plan for the city. So, I mean, this is really excellent stuff. And also, what was mentioned is that we have, you know, the June thirtieth date coming up and I think that, like, I want to echo that, you know, let's be determined, keep being passionate, as we all are on this, be creative, and I think I heard somebody say, be aggressive in coming up with some plans that will work for our city. There are blueprints, there are things that we can look at. And so, I look forward to seeing what the council does and, like I always say, assign me something if you need. I'm happy to keep working with my friends and council members. So, thank you so much for what you've done for the unhoused and Lula and the city.
Darcy?
Katie? Forget how tall I am sometimes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. So, thank you all so much for approving the grant tonight. And I did want to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Vespa that all of this is largely and mostly due to Lula's efforts. So, thank you tremendously. I did also want to touch upon the fact that something that has stood out to me and will probably stand the test of time with the homeless ordinance is the evening that it was passed, coming to the city council meeting and seeing and hearing how many council members stated, "I would love to have a seat at the table." And I echoed this that night and I want to share it again, that you are the table and you quite literally have seats at it. It is actually the community that has to pull up some folding chairs and join the picnic and they're doing that. But the bulk of this responsibility ultimately rests on your shoulders. And I know that's a heavy burden to bear, but it's one ultimately that this council signed up for. And I think also understanding that while the council chose to move forward with passing an ordinance to ban homelessness effectively within the community, it could have created a board, committee, or commission to focus on assisting those who are homeless and providing the community with tools as well as opportunities to transition into housing and to address other hurdles that they were facing, such as experiencing homelessness due to chronic or rare diseases such as various cancers, lupus, MS, or mental health challenges such as facing CPTSD from serving in our military. So, I think that accountability really deserves to be had in this situation and understanding that Lula is where the rubber meets the road. So, I hope that the council can take a moment to press pause and reflect and understand that we should not, as a council, have to criminalize human beings who are our most vulnerable citizens within our community in order to find our humanity and to see them as valuable, creative, intelligent, and worthy members of our society with something to offer this world. Thank you so much.
Aileen Aranda?
Good evening. I just, my name is Aileen Aranda and I am the owner of Coco's Tacos. I just want to express my gratitude to you guys, to the city and the wonderful community for supporting me to open my new restaurant and encouraged me and assisted me to make this ring come true. I just want to say thank you and also, I want to invite everyone to the grand opening. I don't know when it's going to be, but I will let you guys know. All right? Thank you.
You're welcome. Kristel Frosto? Kristel?
Good evening. My name is Kristel Frosto. I am the director.
And my name is Andy Freeman. Thank you for the opportunity.
He didn't want to talk. I'm with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and also The Morning Show, which is a house at Distillery Labs. I wanted to say thank you and express my gratitude for such an incubator to exist in our city. Aileen is a perfect example of someone navigating the challenges of creating a new business, whether it's permits, whether it's meeting with an architect and having blueprints. Distillery Lab now houses, one-stop shop once a month, and we're currently guiding for businesses through the process. It's very exciting to see the networking, the momentum that is happening. So, I want to personally congratulate her and the city for the support and ecosystem that has been built. Also, while I'm here, our ribbon cutting for the show is March twenty-eighth, so you are all invited. We'll have tacos at the lobby and some drinks at Distillery Labs.
And that concludes our public comments. Madam Clerk?
If we do not have an executive session, then we'll be on adjournment.
I would ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Thank you for your service.